Any city council meeting to order, if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, councilmembers Gearbaugh, Cybo Koenig, Rhodes, Roth, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff, we have City Manager Campell, Clerk Royal, City Treasurer Bennett, Police Chief Rennick. The rest of you in the audience this evening, if you'd please be so kind to sign in in the back, we would appreciate that. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Amendment?
Please.
I'd like to add to discussion the DTE LED changes.
Already? So, DTE, that's a rate change, right, Mr. Gearbaugh? Okay. DTE rate change will be added at the conclusion of the discussion portion of our agenda following the water and sewer line insurance issue. Any additional amendments this evening? No, then I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Move by Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes, seconded by Councilmember Gearbaugh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We have no absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that. And we have one presentation this evening, which is from Celine Main Street. So, I believe our board chair, Ms. Supko, is prepared to present. Welcome.
I am, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here to hit the highlights for you, our last quarter, so the fourth quarter of all the activities that happened at Celine Main Street, and hopefully got your packet. And I'm reading off the placemat that we did for the last quarter. So, I'm going to do this by our team. So, we have four teams: organization, design, promotion, and our business and economic success team. In organization, we had over 534 hours of volunteer hours, which equates to $11,748 in equivalent labor. We privately raised $6,487, and that's part of our corporate sponsorship program that we actually start late fall, and I'll tell you a little bit about, more about that as soon as I get through the fourth quarter. In design, of course, we've been working with all of you and URS with the design of the streetscape, and that's been a lot of fun for all of us. And also, we started planning for the student banner project that we did last year. We're going to repeat it this year. So, the work planning all happened in the fourth quarter, and that'll get kicked off, too. And what we did was decided to offer the banners to the parents of the students that created that artwork for a donation, and we've raised over $800 so that we could do, repeat the program in the spring. Through the fourth quarter for promotion, we did Ladies Night Out, which was very successful. The scarecrow contest, we partnered with Dr. Borer, and that was a lot of fun, and that's really grown this year. The parade, we had a blast with the parade as we won first place again. So, had a lot of fun with our Whoville float. And then Winterfest planning took a ton of hours. So, out of that 534 hours that we did in that fourth quarter, a lot of that happened to be our Winterfest planning with Dave Eberlein in the chair. So, for the business and economic success team, they've been busy, too. Business news, J. Andrew Investment moved in downtown in front of the Chamber. Resale boutique expanded down the road, so they actually moved out of the Main Street district, but they expanded in another facility just down the street. And that allowed Dan's to expand again where he's at and had, did a little more investment with his property. Business retention, the business and economic success team held a marketing and advertising workshop, and Design Hub actually came and did that for us at no cost. We also partnered with the Chamber and presented a crowdfunding workshop up above Mont Giambos, thank you, Mont Giambos. And Shot Small Saturday was a big event downtown, and a lot of the business owners got involved with that. And then also, we partnered with the city in developing the task force for the streetscape project and the construction. So, it's been a busy fourth quarter. Coming up, a couple of things, I wanted to just give you highlights on before the next quarter is up. The corporate sponsorship program is growing again, which is a really good sign that people are investing in downtown, investing in Celine Main Street, and they see value in what's going on with the volunteers and all of you. So, the partnership has been growing. This is the first year, actually, that the dollars that we've brought in to date will exceed the contract amount for services that we do with the city. So, we're pretty proud of that, and it keeps going. And then Ladies Night Out is scheduled for March 26th. Taste of Celine is coming up, and that would be April 29th. So, those are the things coming up, but we'll report more on those later.
Any questions for our Main Street Board Chair? Well, thank you for your report, and congratulations on a very successful Winterfest. It was a very nice event.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you. They worked hard.
Indeed, they did. We extend our thanks to all the volunteers who made that event successful.
We definitely were.
Anything from council? No? Cindy, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate you being here. We move on now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, excuse me, and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? No, then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item 15-15. This is 207 Monroe Street property Charles Reinhardt listing agreement amendment. This will be a motion to acknowledge the January 28th, 2015 memo from City Manager Campell and to approve or not to approve an extension of the agreement to June 30th, 2015, for the 207 Monroe Street property listing with Charles Reinhardt Company.
I move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Roth. It's been moved to acknowledge, receipt, and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. Mr. Campell, do you care to comment at all?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pretty self-explanatory. As you all know, working towards, hopefully, the sale and redevelopment of 207 with Reinhardt, and Darby Colano is here to represent them if he had any questions. But as we move forward with that, hopefully, that comes to a close in the near future. But until such time, staff has recommended that we continue the relationship with Reinhardt to represent that property.
Very good.
Darby, do you care to make any comment?
I think that's really, it's real simple.
Excellent. Okay, very good. Are there any questions for staff or the applicant? Mr. Roth, Councilmember Roth.
On the charge, or the change agreement, there's several things. Items two, three, four, and five are left blank. Can it be the proper assumption that it's going to remain the same as a previous one?
That is correct. The only thing, this is, again, a standard change agreement form, so the only thing that's being proposed to change would be the extension date.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Any discussion? No, then it's been properly moved by Councilmember Roth, seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig to acknowledge, receipt, and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Darby, thank you for being here. We move on to new business, item 15-16. This is request for sewer credit, excuse me, at 159 Whitlock. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 27th, 2015 memo from Treasurer Bennett and to approve or not to approve the request of Gregory Corner for relief of sewer charges in the amount of $543.66.
I'd move to approve.
Moved to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Ms. Bennett, do you care to comment at all?
There's questions.
Are there questions for City Treasurer? Mr. Gearbaugh.
Could you just, we had a similar situation like this. How did we handle it the last time? Or the water was running outside in the yard? I think it was.
Yeah, we have had, as I outlined in my memos, we've had had a couple of incidents like this where we've had significant water damage that was puddling. There was the one that was out in the yard. We also had one that was in, that had flooded a basement, and the water had soaked up into the walls, and the furniture was damaged, and they showed the water and stuff like that. And those individuals were requested on an individual basis.
Did that water run into the sewer? I was thinking examples we had, the water had not gone into the sewer. In this situation, where was this water running to?
According to this situation, on 159 Whitlock, the water ran out into the yard and into the basement.
And there wasn't a basement drain? That's why I was just wondering. No. Just want to clarify. Okay.
Mr. Campell, do you have a comment, sir?
Well, that's, I mean, that's what they're alleging. They're claiming is that it ran out and didn't go into the sewer.
Okay.
But we don't, I guess.
I just wanted to make sure, just check.
Yeah, we, we as staff don't have any proof on one another.
Additional questions? Mr. Roth.
A concern that I have is, doesn't the basement have a sewer drainage that would go into the storm sewer or wherever it might be?
No, that house is too old. That dirt basement. It's down Whitlock, it could be very old. Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to make sure, too, that, I'm not exactly sure. Did you get these photos attached to that letter?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that you did get those photos.
Yeah, I just couldn't tell from it whether or not there was a drain or not.
Yeah, the, he, the letter states that it was a Michigan basement, which when I think of a Michigan basement is a dirt foundation, so I would think not a drain in there. But I don't know. Not my area of expertise.
Well, I'm going to go from the assumption that there isn't a drain there.
Any additional comments or questions? Any subsequent discussion? No, then it's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Tahar, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on. Don't you stay right there, Ms. Bennett?
Aye.
We move on to new business, item 15-17. This is request for sewer credit at 319 North Ann Arbor Street. This will be a motion to acknowledge the January 27th, 2015 memo from Treasurer Bennett and to approve or not to approve the request of David Jenkins for relief of sewer charges in the amount of $247.52. Is there a motion?
I would move to not approve.
Moved by Rhodes to not approve. Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second for discussion.
Seconded by Gearbaugh for discussion, okay? Ms. Bennett, do you care to make any comment on this?
As I outlined in my memo, the letter came to me stating that he had realized that he had a large amount of water consumption, and he knew that most of that had went into the pool and not due to a number of reasons. One, which he alluded to, was a leaking pool. He feels that the water did not go into the sanitary sewer, and therefore is requesting the waiver of his sanitary, a portion of his sanitary fees.
Mr. Gearbaugh, please.
Isn't our standard practice for filling pools that you have to make a special request beforehand? I thought we had something like that.
We don't issue pool credits anymore. We used to issue pool credits that, I think I attached that, maybe I didn't, but we don't issue any kind of pool credit at all for pools when they fill the pool anymore. We've done away with that years ago.
So, the only way, if you had a separate meter, then you would be able to?
You could get a separate meter, which we do encourage for sprinkler system outside exterior for sprinklers and monitoring and filling pools.
Thank you.
Mr. Roth.
The reason for my action on this particular item as opposed to the previous one is that this gentleman knew and acknowledged that he was using water, and while he may not have realized that that was going to have an impact on his sewer rates, he did, in fact, use that water and knew it, whereas the previous case, that water was being used without anyone's knowledge at all. So, that's my primary reason for not recommending not approving this particular one.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes. Any subsequent questions for Ms. Bennett? Any discussion? Mr. Har.
I would recommend that we recommend to Mr. Jenkins, if he doesn't already know about the possibility of having separate metering for outside use, that that option be pointed out to him.
Okay, we'll do that.
Anything further? All right. Then, just want to recall, or just want everyone in the dais to recall, excuse me, this is a motion to not approve, and that was moved by Rhodes and seconded by Gearbaugh. So, all those in favor of not approving the request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Ms. Bennett, thank you for your time this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We move on to the last new business item of the evening, which is 15-18, determination of mayor council salaries for 2015, 2016. Actually, before I call a motion on this, I know we have the board chair, Chris Loftus, here. Mr. Loftus, do you care to make any comment this evening, sir?
If I may.
Absolutely. We welcome you here this evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I bring glad tidings. I hope that you have the minutes and the recommendations from the compensation committee of, which I am the chairman. I want to go over a few things. I hope that you'll listen with open ears. Since 2004, the committee has attempted on numerous occasions, every two years, to recommend that you, as a council, take a raise, usually 2% to 3% for a two-year period. For obvious reasons, political and otherwise, those raises have usually been turned down. So, over the last 10 years, you have not taken a raise, though your responsibilities have increased exponentially over the years. And in 2006, and I believe in 2009, the last opportunities for you to take those raises. We, as a committee, decided that your compensation is far below your responsibilities and the time that you put in for our city and our citizens. So, as you can see from the numbers that are in front of you, for 2015, we recommended, and we are asking for your approval, of a 10% increase for 2015 for the mayor, up to $4,400 a year. For the mayor Pro Tem, we are asking for a 3% increase up to $2,550. And for the council, what would appear to be a large increase for one year of 14.95%, bringing you also up to $2,550 per year. I would like to point out at this particular junction that that 14.95% is a raise that spread out over the 10 years you've been denying yourselves compensation comes out to almost a little less than 2% over a 10-year period increase. For 2016, we go back to our regular and conservative figure of everybody getting a 3% increase. These raises, we feel, when we look at city councils and township board members and trustees and the compensation that they get, is still conservative and still minor compared to your responsibilities and your responsibilities going forward. As we can see around here, we are going to be doing a lot this year with Michigan Avenue, with the city, with all the different things that go on. It's getting more and more complicated to do your job. You had a work meeting today starting at 6 o'clock. We're getting through this pretty quickly, but there are times when you're here until 10 o'clock at night. When you spread this increase up over those periods and a minimum of 48 meetings per year, not counting meetings on the sidewalk, meeting in the office, meeting at festivals, you get paid practically nothing compared to what other comparable towns and townships and counties in the area get. So, we are hoping that you'll take a close look at these numbers, and please accept our recommendations for the next two years of 10% for the mayor, 3% for the Pro Tem, 14.95% for yourselves, the council, for 2015, and then a conservative 3% across the board for 2016. Are there any questions?
Mr. Loftus, thank you very much. Are there any questions for the board chair? Ms. Tahar.
I notice, at the present time, we have a differential rate between the mayor Pro Tem and council members, and that disappears in your proposal. Can you talk about the thought behind that?
Yes. There was concern amongst a few of the committee members that overall, the president Pro Tem does not take over the mayor's duties on a overwhelming number of times. Sorry about that. Over the years, after talking to members of the city staff, we determined that the Pro Tem takes over as mayor occasionally. But for the most part, you are a city council member, and when we have people like we've had in the past, like Kitchen and Bryan, who are there all the time, unless amazingly incapacitated, we decided to make everybody even, except for the mayor, of course. I hope that's understandable. And then we want to continue that from now on.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for the board chair? Chris, appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Well, then, we'll proceed to the motion, and of course, the chair will entertain any subsequent discussion. But the motion before us would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 16th, 2015 memo from the local officers' compensation committee, commission, excuse me, with the notice of determination setting forth the salaries for mayor, mayor Pro Tem, and council for 2015 and 16, and to accept or reject the increased salaries for 2015, 2016. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt and to accept.
Been moved to acknowledge receipt and it's accept by Ms. Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. Is there any discussion? Ms. Tahar.
My, my thought behind moving to accept this recommendation is, it's not really about the money, it's about symbolism. And in our society, fortunately or unfortunately, one of the ways we indicate that we value something is through money. And so, I think that an increase in the salary in a year when we've been able to give increases to staff as well is appropriate as an indication of the value we place on the work that we do.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Any additional comments? Mr. Roth and then Mr. Gearbaugh, Mr. Rhodes, excuse me. Get my Rs mixed up.
That's close. I very much appreciate the work and the effort and the comments that were made by Mr. Loftus, and I understand that we are, in fact, vastly underpaid if we're trying to establish monetary compensation based on our value and the amount of time that we put in. But I do want to state that, at least for myself, I would do the same effort and put the same amount of time in for zero salary. And I think all of us here, we don't serve because of $2,500 or whatever that we're going to get. We serve because we have a passion for our community, and we want to do what's best for our community. So, thank you.
Mr. Gearbaugh.
Mr. Rhodes pretty much stole my thunder. I just appreciate what the commission has looked at, and the individuals on there expressed that their concern is that we try to keep somewhat up to speed with what the other townships and things are happening. Part of the other thing, too, is we want to keep people interested in running for council, and potentially, there could be some help with this kind of compensation. It's not a huge increase. I think it's sufficient to acknowledge that whatever you're doing, you are doing some of it for this function, and some of these costs have to be offset. But again, it's not for the money. It's, I think, the issue of basically assisting us with any kind of expenditures that we may incur personally. So, I'm supporting this.
Any additional comments? Well, let me just say, Mr. Loftus, as always, you were very eloquent this evening, and we appreciate you, you serving the city in this current capacity. You've served this community in a number of ways, and we greatly appreciate that. And I should also mention that the other four members of the commission, Gene Korfman, Mary Hess, Leslie Parcells, and Rebecca Schneider, have also contributed in tangible ways to this community. It's one of the reasons why they were selected for this board, and we are all eternally grateful to that. I won't belabor the point, but very similar to Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Gearbaugh, and I suspect everyone at the dais, I don't do it for the money. If there was no compensation, I would do it. I'm very passionate about this community and its future, and quite frankly, I love what I do. And I'm very cognizant of the fact that there are a great many people in this world that don't get to live their dreams for five seconds, and I get to live it every day as mayor. And so, the pleasure is all mine. But I do greatly appreciate the fact that these five outstanding individuals have placed a lot of trust and confidence and faith in our ability, and that is appreciated and valued very much, and I thank you for that. Are there any additional comments? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Roth, to accept. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries. Mr. Loftus, thank you, sir. We move on to the discussion portion of the agenda. Commission, committee, and task force reports from council members. Mr. Rhodes.
I'd like to report on the environmental commission, which meant last week, we elected officers for this coming year, this current year, and we authorized the payment of the annual dues to the River Rays and Watershed Council. Also wanted to remind everyone that we have our electronic waste cleanup event on April the 25th, which is the last Saturday of April. It's held in City Hall parking lot here, and the proceeds from that benefit the Fifth Corner Teen Center. And then the county will be back again this fall on September 26th for the County Cleanup Day, in which you can bring all kinds of things, things that you might have a difficult time disposing of otherwise. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that the environmental commission provided a recycle container, which is in the back of council chambers. It has a nice little green flap on it and a couple of signs that say what you can put in there. The idea is that we want to recycle the things that we use in this chamber sometimes, and we forget about it, and they end up in the trash can over there because that was most convenient. So, Environmental Commission has provided that receptacle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes. Ms. Tahar.
The Arts and Culture Committee met today, and we had several presentations. And as a result of one discussion, we voted to join in as a sponsor of the student art, the student banners project that Main Street is sponsoring and that Sidney spoke about earlier. And then we had a presentation from a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Parks Commission, about a proposal for a historical marker regarding the origin of the city name, Celine, related to the Salt Springs, which we will also be supporting that. It's a proposal that will be coming to the city council from another body, but we'll be supporting that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Any additional commission, committee, or task force reports? Mr. Gearbaugh, I'm sorry.
Historic District Commission is still looking for a couple individuals. We have a couple of open positions, but I believe we have some interest coming. But if there are individuals, preferably, that actually live in the Historic District Commission, we'd be very interested in having them serve.
Absolutely. Let me, let me second that, that for years, we've had a number of people who actually live in the district serving, which is great because they have empathy with the other residents. And so, do you have two vacancies currently?
Currently, two, yes.
And so, if we could at least find one who lived on North or South Ann Arbor or West Henry, that would be terrific. So, if anybody is interested, or you know anybody who may be interested, please refer them to the city website, fill out that board and commission application, and turn it into the clerk's office, okay? Any other commission, committee, or task force reports? How about reports or other announcements? Ms. Tahar.
Yeah, this is, this is something I just became aware of earlier this, late last week, and that is, for small business owners, under the new personal property tax rules, this is just a reminder, if you qualify for an exception, exemption, sorry, for personal property, and you filed one last year, you need to do it again. There is apparently some misunderstanding. I had this misunderstanding myself, that once it was done, it was over. But, so if you're eligible for the personal property exemption, you need to file the form with the assessor's office, and the deadline is not later than February 10th. And perhaps Mr. Smith could explain a little bit more about that. I don't have all of the details about amounts of property and so on.
Actually, in February, there are two deadlines with respect to personal property tax. The one, three deadlines. If you have to pay personal property-
If you have to pay personal property tax, you're a large commercial industry, business, you have the property tax statement that's due on February 20th. If you're entitled to the small taxpayer exemption, that form has to be filed on an annual basis because it's based on the value of the property you have, and that can change from year to year. That one has to be filed by February 10. In addition, if you're a larger business, then in 2016, you're a manufacturer, and in 2016, you're going to have property coming off the property tax roll, you also have to file a form notifying the assessor that that's going to start happening in 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other reports or announcements? Then we'll move on to pension liability. Ms. Bennett, do you want to come to the podium and maybe assist us with this discussion? It's my understanding that everyone has now had an opportunity to meet with staff and discuss some of the particulars of one proposal to manage our pension liability. Is that correct? Was there a meeting week ago Friday?
Yes, there was a meeting week ago Friday where I had a conversation with Ms. Dillon, Ms. Sibyl Keenig, and Mr. Rhodes, so there were three of you guys, which was basically just reviewing the work meeting that we had had as a council December 1st. Boy, reach him back. December 1st, we had a work meeting, and at that time, our pension, or our financial advisor was here, and he had presented some figures on a $7 million debt for the unfunded liability of our pension. This is just pension. So, this is the retirement for the defined benefit in employees through the city of Celine. So, what we did at that meeting on last Friday was just bring everybody up to the same, to the same level, and discussing that there is an option. The state law was originally allowed for municipalities to borrow to help offset their unfunded liability, and that it was extended till December 31st of this year. To receive that bond, or to receive that debt, we would have to go through an approval through the state of Michigan, which we would also have to file a report. We'd have to make sure that all of our defined benefit programs were closed. Currently, we still have three that are open. There is a cost associated with closing them, and then, as we explained, once we close them, it will accelerate the amortization period on that unfunded liability. So, if this is something that the council wants to do, there is quite a deal of work to do. We would have to have our legal counsel and our financial advisors do some work and get some information together. And the issuance cost on that was a question that was not answered at the December 1st work meeting. The issuance cost would probably be about $5,000, or 5% of the amount of that bond, and we would roll that into the amount of the bond. That was the conversation we had on December 1st. That was kind of a follow-up on where we were at. There possibly could be some other alternatives on ways that we could handle that unfunded liability towards a pension. But, you know, the decisions we need to make are going forward, what we're going to do, are we going to close the remaining ones, which, for your information and a reminder, we have closed out our police contracts and our union contracts, and they are now a defined contribution, meaning that the city will contribute up to 10%. And then the employer, employee can, will match up to that, and that would be our contribution.
So, Ms. Bennett, the way I see it, and you touched on some of this, is this body needs to decide, really, within the next six months, although the deadline is December of this year. We should have a plan in place or consensus, I would think, within six months. Is that fair?
Less.
Less?
Less. I think this council, I think this body needs to make a decision on how we're going to approach this, for this next budget process that is fastly approaching us. If we decide to go with the bonding, we're going to have to get those ball, that ball rolling, and then we have to have the bonds issued by December 31st of this year.
Right. So, what we need to decide then in the next three or four months is whether we're going to pursue this bonding proposal that was discussed at the beginning of December, which you debriefed three council members on in the past few weeks. Whether we pursue some sort of internal borrowing, and then we would need to determine what the amount is. And then, third, whether or not we're going to close out these accounts, which you touched in in your presentation. Is that accurate?
I, yeah, I believe so. Is there something else, Todd, that you can?
I would just reiterate, I don't know if the, at least the conversation, the recent conversation we had with our bond council, as well as our financial advisor, was that it's probably closer to March or April that we need to have a decision to. So, if that's, if the bonding, pension bonding is the direction that city council would like to go, that would be the latest to begin moving forward with that.
Okay. I can tell you personally, I am a little skeptical of the bonding proposal that we discussed in December. I think the appropriate and prudent course of action would be, unless my colleagues disagree, would be to convene a work meeting, probably in the next month or so, invite Roger and Warren, discuss all the options, and hopefully, at that point, develop a consensus. And again, I think a work meeting is most conducive to the type of dialogues and Q and A that would be ultimately beneficial.
I would propose to include our representative from MERS, Sue Feinberg, at that meeting also.
Excuse me, Sue Feinberg as well, yes.
Just so that we have all the parties at the table present, and review the options of what we can do. Unfunded liability isn't going to go away. We have closed out a great deal of it. It's not going to go away, and we do, we're going to have to pay it. In fact, we are paying that aggressive schedule on our police and on our, and our teamsters. So, it's a matter of how are we going to address the issue? Not, it's just a matter of how we're going to do it, because our levels are going to start, we're going to start seeing spikes in our pension payments, one way or the other, and we need to start being proactive, I think, and have that conversation about how we're going to approach that funding, one way or the other. So, I agree. I would think in March, we would want to have a good work meeting and discuss this and all of the options available.
What, how did the rest of council, how does the rest of council feel? Ms. Sibyl Keenig, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I would, I prefer that.
Okay, Mr. Girba?
I agree. I think the options could be that we pay, us paying ourselves may be a better benefit than trying to pay someone outside if we can try and sell funds. So, I think however we do those three initiatives, showing the risk and all the aspects, it's the best way to approach this.
Okay, Mr. Rhodes?
I agree with the concept of the work meeting, with all the spokes in attendance. Hopefully, soon enough that we can have enough time to ruminate over possibilities before we actually vote.
Excellent. Okay, Ms. Tahar?
Yes, I agree. I think, and I, and I also especially endorse the idea of looking at the issue and all of the possible solutions. I think up until now, we've been looking at a solution first, and then the problem. And I, I'm really in favor of flipping the emphasis and looking at the problem and all possible solutions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Roth?
I am told agreement that we need a work session. I agree with Councilmember Tahar regarding all solutions, but I'd like to have an additional thing at that work meeting. We could have the dollar figures for all the proposals.
Yes, sir.
So, we could actually see what it's going to cost the cities, so we can make a prudent judgment.
Excellent. Ms. Dillon?
I'm in favor of a work meeting.
Okay. So, between you, Ms. Bennett, Mr. Campbell, and the city clerk, and whomever else, will you, this week, try and get in touch with Sue Feinberg at MERS, Roger and Warren, and see if they can agree on a date in March? Ideally, I would think probably around 6:00 prior to either our first or second meeting during that month. Good?
Yeah, and I would encourage any questions that the council members might have, that they would like answered. I mean, we've had a deal, a conversation about this. So, if there are some questions, I know there are some of them that I said I'm going to have answers for, and I will have answers for those. They may not be the answers we want, but we'll have answers at that work meeting. So, if anything else comes up, I would encourage you to send myself and Todd an email, and we will make sure that we get those addressed, so that we can start maybe getting some action on this item.
And I would, I'm cautiously optimistic and hopeful that maybe by our next meeting, which I know is a week from today, and maybe we can have an idea as to the availability of those three, so I can confirm with council.
Sure, yeah, a date for you by the next meeting? Oh, I think we can do that.
Okay, very good. Please.
Just one other thing, and I would like either a side, side discussion or part of it, is the issue addressing retiree health benefit issues that potentially are a liability for us, and how we will fund that.
Okay, say that again.
Our retiree health benefits.
I'm focused on pension right now.
I know you're on pension.
I think I heard you sort of.
But I think we need to have that other discussion as part of it, because that's another huge liability we're not addressing at this point.
Right. Okay, so, as a side note, we will also talk about other post-employment benefits, which are also called as OPEB, which is probably coming, I mean, funding for that's going to be coming down the pike, so.
And how to manage that.
And how to manage that, and what we are doing, because we are doing some things right now to do that. So, I, that would be.
So, that we have a big picture of exactly what our true, our employee expenses will be. Thanks.
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tem, please.
I just want to let everyone know, I'm going to be out of state for our first meeting in March, so if.
Well, that's good news to know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but, so, you know, unless that impacts other folks for the second meeting, my preference would be to have this work study.
So, our March meetings would be the 2nd and the 9th, correct?
Correct.
No.
16th.
16th or something.
They rotate back then to the, to the 1st and 3rd.
So, I will target for the 16th.
16th. But I would tell those three, that's our preference.
Our preference date?
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Ms. Bennett.
You're welcome.
Anything further on pension liability? No? Okay. Then we move on to downtown parking. I just want to make you aware, in your packets that were delivered on Thursday, you should have received an email dated Wednesday, the 28th, from Jack and Maureen Goman regarding a parking issue. And then at the dais this evening, there are some spreadsheets that I think Mr., and some, some maps, that I believe Mr. Campbell will be speaking about shortly. Let me, let me just kick this off, and I've had a number of conversations over the past week with, with Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes on this subject, and I sort of casually bumped into Ms. Tahar, I believe, last Wednesday, and talked to her about some of these issues as well. Obviously, I suspect that most of you have received some sort of feedback and commentary from, from business owners and from, from residents and patrons of our downtown shops regarding, well, regarding the fact that we recently began enforcing the, the parking restrictions effective January 1. And quite frankly, I'm not interested tonight in discussing that particular aspect, and that particular aspect being the enforcement. Because if you recall, when we agreed and consented to enforcement, we indicated that we would be discussing this again in June, and that we were not beholden to, to, we certainly, well, let me, let me take a step back, that we, we would be willing and be amenable to making changes at that time. But I think the thoughtful and the intelligent approach would be to analyze this for six months and be able to assess all of the ebbs and flows. Now, that's, that's my opinion, and I don't know how the rest of you feel. But the issues that I'm interested in having a more focused discussion on tonight are the issues that were brought up in the email by Jack and, and Maureen Goman regarding the creation of a non-commercial loading and unloading zone on that side of South Ann Arbor Street. There have been some issues that have been brought up by another business owner who's expanded, who feels that there are not a sufficient number of long-term parking spots in the southeast quadrant of downtown. And the other thing that I think we'll touch on tonight, when I yield the floor to Mr. Campbell, and I've, I've spoken to many of you, many of you about this, and articulated it publicly, but as we move forward, I think that there is clearly a parking deficiency in our downtown. In fact, I think if you look at all of our quadrants, I think with the exception of maybe one, every one of the quadrants is underutilized from a retail commercial perspective. And I think when we have businesses that, that come on board, and we have one that's, that's, that's going to open hopefully in June, a brewery in the southeastern quadrant, which we hope to be a destination, a draw, I think we're going to have some real problems when you take into account not only employees, but customers. So, I think we need to start developing a long-term strategy and approach as to how we deal with, with these issues, and accommodate and be helpful to our business owners and also those people who wish to patronize our stores and utilize our services in our community. So, I didn't mean to be long-winded and bombastic there. Does anyone have, Mr. Rhodes, do you have a comment or two, sir?
I just wanted to state that in, in total, I agree with Mayor Marl's comments about holding off for our six-month time period while discussing enforcement. We do have a couple of issues that we need to address in the meantime, and I'm, personally, I'm really pleased that we have parking difficulty, because that means we have business, we have activity in our downtown. And while it may be painful for those business owners in the meantime, because a business can get up and running a lot faster than the city can acquire and produce parking spaces. So, y'all may have to bear with us for a while, but we're, we're working on things. So, that's my comments.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Can I turn it over to you to give a, an overview on the various issues, Mr. Campbell?
I know, I think you covered it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I had, I had requested this put on for discussion item, as the mayor alluded, having at least one downtown business owner contact me and say, let me know his concerns about how he's expanding, he's hiring some more people, and the concern of, are there enough extended time parking spaces for, for employees? And so, Chief Rinnick and I have done some little review in walking downtown, and we're also working, so, so just real briefly, so for reference only at this point in time, you'll see the, the maps of the parking lots, and down in the bottom left, it tells you which parking lot, parking lot 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And of course, 3 and 5, and part of 4 are the extended parking times. And the other handout that I have, you'll see this bunch of numbers. We're, this is one, this was last week's analysis by our police department as they went through. I believe, all except for Friday, they went through four or five different times in each lot to tell us how much, how many vacant spaces there were, as far as whether or not there are any vacant spaces. And you'll see that overall, there's a fair amount, some, some are filled up. So, you have parking lot 3, overall, a 32% vacancy rate. But you, as you can see, depending on the day and the time, there's, it's busier, busier the other days and, and different times. Parking lot 4, the same, about a 20% vacancy, and then a large vacancy rate in parking lot 5, which is on McKay Street, 82% vacancy rate. I think the most in that week's, last week, was, two days, there was seven spaces at a couple of different times that were being used, utilized out of the 21 spaces, or 20 spaces, I'm sorry. So, in any case, and then I'll get to this other handout in one, in a moment, but I just wanted to bring this up to discuss the possibilities, whether or not we do need some additional extended parking for employees, employers. And again, next week, we'll have two weeks' worth of data to, to share and look at. But as you can see, park, in parking lot 5, there's, there's a fair amount of parking spaces currently not being used. So, but we'll, I guess, as far as from staff's perspective, we'll, we'll wait to kind of make any, give, come to any potential conclusions or make any recommendations or suggestions until we get that second week's worth of data. But just wanted to bring it up and bring it, in case you hadn't been, been notified, or if you had been notified, to put some data to those, those comments and those concerns. And so, it's, to me, you know, it's, it's those unintended consequences when you, when you change to a different policy, change policy direction, and then oftentimes, for better for worse, there's unintended consequences. So, unless there's any, any questions on that, again, this is more, again, this was, initially, this was an informational discussion, and then with the, with the request from Jack and Maureen, we wanted, we, this kind of was a natural transition as well. So, I guess, is there any, Mayor, if there's any comments or questions about the extended parking information thus far?
I don't, doesn't look like there are any questions, but of course, we will be getting, by next Monday, we'll have another work, we, we, weeks' worth of data, excuse me.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Girba, I'm sorry, did you have a comment or question?
Just quick, I was going to say, have you noticed the change in this since our new ordinance was put in place?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you want to transition to the next issue, then?
Well, if I could clarify, Mr. Girba, in parking lot 3, we have.
Okay.
And probably in along parking, along the, along the westerly. And probably in along parking, along the, along the westerly side of parking lot four where it's extended, along the fence line there, those are, but I would, I would say that, that parking lot five continues to be significantly underutilized.
No, but we've seen a behavior change, so that's, that's good.
Correct, yes, absolutely. Okay, then to Maureen's designs, their request, and you can see from the, the other handout, it's front and back. If you look, and I also, and is, I guess Gary, Gary escaped. So, but Gary assisted in this as well as Jeff and Chief Rinnick in putting this, both of these information for both these subjects. But you can see on the bottom where it says scenario B, there's, you can see that triangular space, that, that's what we call a transition lane. So that's where you're transitioning from parking into the travel lane, and so that's, that's not a parking area. Now, however, that's been utilized and allowed to be utilized with no enforcement. And I know Jack may, if, at some point, if they're in public comment, wanted to address the council, but not to speak for Jack, but from the conversation we've had, you know, he's utilized this as a loading/unloading for the last eight years. And now, and now it's being enforced, just as all the other downtown parking is being enforced, to not allow that. But it's also used, my understanding is anecdotally, it's utilized for anywhere from, from dropping maybe elderly folks off to, to patronize some of the restaurants, to, to drop other, other patrons off of other businesses that maybe can't walk the, from the parking lots to wherever their destination is. So those are others, other uses. So, and that, so the discussion, and as, as the mayor alluded to earlier, about the request to make a, a non-commercial loading zone, and let me be clear, and Chief, feel free to jump in if I misrepresent anything, certainly not knowingly or on purpose. But for instance, the loading, the loading zone across the street on the, on the west side is a commercial. And so when I say commercial, meaning it's a commercial vehicle, commercial plates. And Maureen's Designs uses a, a passenger vehicle, passenger plates, that type of thing. So for them to park over there during those regulated hours, I think it's eight to four, I believe, would not be allowed. So this would be dedicating a space, not, not to Maureen's, but a public, non, non-commercial, if you will, loading/unloading zone. And I know one of the, so a couple ideas here, one would be to put that, that parking space where the transition area currently is, that transition lane. That's scenario A. Scenario B would be to maintain that transition area as is and use the next legal parking space to the south of the transition area as that designated space. And again, I, I know Mr. Goman would prefer to be as is right now where it's at in the transition area. So, having said that, you know, there's, there's considerations for traffic as it, as it, as it moves along, and of course, there's that, there's a little bit of a choke point, right? Because of the, the transition area where it is currently. And where if you moved it to the north, essentially one, one parking space, if you will, then that, that decreases the, the number of vehicles that can be stacked before you, before you bottleneck and can't get to the left turn lane, or for that, well, for that matter, the right turn lane too, or the through lane. But, so those are some considerations, and again, we're not, we wanted to bring this as an informational item and potentially bring it back for consideration at next Monday's meeting.
And again, as you are all aware, per council guidelines, which were adopted in 2002 and revised and, and re-approved in, in 2013, we try our very best not to spring issues on the, on the entire group and, and demand that you take action immediately, but to be a little bit more thoughtful on, on these types of issues. So this will come back as an, a discussion item and hopefully an action item at our next meeting, which is just a week from today. I can tell you, as it relates to this issue specifically, I am very sympathetic to the petitioner's request. And I think ideally, if it can be done, the creation of a non-commercial loading and unloading zone would be best. In fact, it would be a little hypocritical and disingenuous for me just moments ago to talk about the need for more parking and then propose that we eliminate one of the existing public spaces. And certainly, the non-commercial loading and unloading zone on the east side of South Ann Arbor Street would be utilized by Maureen's Design. It's a business that during certain times of the year needs very close access to a vehicle for loading and unloading. But as Mr. Campbell said, we know that it would be utilized by people who are going to patronize Max and Brecken, potentially for deliveries at the, the coffee house as well. So those are just my two cents, and I welcome any questions or, or thoughts that other members of council have. Mr. Rhodes?
Couple of questions. This potential non-commercial loading space, what, what loading times would, would be on that? Do we have, have we thought that far yet?
Just in that, that's, it's been, it's been discussed as far as it's an option. So whether, you know, 30 minutes, an hour, but again, that's as far as the discussion's been.
Okay, I was thinking it needs to be relatively short-term in order for it to turn over to provide a, an empty space there for the petitioner's request, and then.
Did you have an idea in mind, Mr. Rhodes?
No, I did not.
No, just curious.
And then if I could digress a bit from that one, parking lot number two has some signed spaces for that building on the west side. Are those required signed spaces as part of a lease agreement or an easement, or what, how, how did they get there?
That is part of a, when that, when that parking lot was, the properties were assembled for that parking lot. Agreement with the then-property owner that, that provided that, that portion of the property. I believe it's five spaces are guaranteed for that property, similar to the, the bank.
Okay, so that's a legal requirement.
Correct.
That we have that, because I, I've observed on occasion, at least one of the tenants in that building going over and parking in the, the general unassigned parking spaces. And I'm not sure if that happens on a regular basis or, or what, but if, if they have signed spaces, they should use them.
Right, and I don't know if they have, if that exceeds the number of people in that building. But, I mean, they certainly, you know, they, again, they, they have the right to park for four hours within that eight to six without being taken.
Yeah, I just, I hate to see a, a public space being taken up if there's an empty signed space, was my.
Oh, sure, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Harf?
Yes, I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Goman about this last week as well. So I've been looking around on South Ann Arbor Street on my own. And I, my, my initial thoughts about this would be to favor a small loading space on the street in one of the two locations, depending on, on traffic rules and, and street design issues. And, and I think it, it has a benefit for the, the shop, but also has a benefit for some of the other, as already mentioned, some of the other businesses around dropping off patrons. And looking on the, on the flip side, on the map, I think one of the concerns is lose, I mean, we're talking about losing parking, potentially losing a parking space. And I wondered, on the west side of Ann Arbor Street, down toward Henry, there is a section that is no parking. It's not a loading zone, it's just a no parking space. And I wondered why that's no parking, and if it's possible to use at least part of that space to add another street parking spot on, on Ann Arbor Street, to, to potentially make up, if we have to lose a parking space for this loading zone, we might recoup it by, by adding another one, another location.
That, great question. Unfortunately, the answer is it creates a sight hazard. So when you're on, so if you're eastbound on West Henry, wanting to make it a, a traffic movement, if you will, when there's a vehicle there, it's exceedingly difficult, and you almost have to go out into the, nose out into the travel lane to see around it. And especially if there's a, say, a, now, a smaller compact car, for instance, or maybe a smaller sedan may not be an issue. However, anything larger than that becomes a sight hazard to see around for upcoming traffic.
Okay, I'll take your word for that. I totally don't get that, but I'll accept that and go take a look for myself.
Okay.
Mr. Rhodes?
I would just add to the comment, that's an existing sight issue already for that traffic pattern that Mr. Campbell mentioned. Everybody who is traveling eastbound on Henry ends up crossing the crosswalk in order to see oncoming traffic. So it, it's bad already, I, I would hate to see it be made worse.
Any other comments? Mr. Gearbo?
I don't have an issue with putting in a loading zone. I think, what's the time across for Benito's and Iary? Isn't that like 15 minutes or so? I would assume that we'd want a short period of time, too.
I don't know that there's a, I can't remember, I mean, it's from eight till four, 8:00 AM till, I think it's 8:00 AM, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. But I, I apologize, we can double check if there's, I don't know that there's a time for a, for an interview, I don't think so. It's just those, within those hours.
Okay. The only concern, other concern is that, making sure that all the businesses, including Cobblestone Rose, the barber shop, all of that, and then actually even our new brewery, looking at that whole aspect of delivery and onset that may be potentially locating it farther to the south, may be beneficial to support the whole block.
Any other comments?
Sure. Some other ideas that are being discussed are possibly either considering leasing existing spa, lots, maybe after business hours, if you will, for, for public use. And then another possibility are some of the vacant property to potentially purchase and redevelop into some additional parking. But of course, just like with everything, there, there's a price tag with those, especially purchasing a property and redeveloping them. So, but those are in the, in the infancy stages and will stand by to stand by.
Mr. Gearbo?
Comment on that one?
Please.
If we're going into leasing business and it's for employee parking, I believe that should be a private arrangement that, if we can help facilitate that, but we should not be the intermediary for that.
Anything else? Mr. Rhodes?
A comment on this very early thinking process about the possibility of, of purchasing and creating additional surface parking. At this point in time, I'd like to suggest that we look seriously at the lot that is on West Henry Street, which was intended to be a parking lot anyway for the future development of 147 Western Michigan Avenue, for a couple of reasons. One is I think the price could be, would be quite reasonable. The second is that it would help to balance out our parking because we're really heavy in parking in the southeast quadrant and have less in the southwest quadrant. And if it's, if it's intended to become a parking lot anyway, then it helps my efforts of not covering more of our surface area with, with asphalt. It's, it's not good environmentally, and it restricts the construction of, of more businesses. And lastly, it would, I believe, help to demonstrate to any potential developer that we are, we're working with, the, working towards the future development of 147 by having that parking lot already in place. Thank you.
I would, I would enthusiastically endorse Mr. Rhodes' proposal to have staff engage with the current deedholders of that parcel to see what potential exists for acquisition and development. I would assume there are no objections from the dais. Obviously, if there were to be action taken, it would need to come back here for discussion, for a vote. Is that appropriate? Have staff proceed?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do you like hearing the census on that? Okay. Well, on the other two issues, the non-commercial loading and unloading zone on South Ann Arbor Street, and then the issues of long-term parking in that quadrant of downtown, it is my hope that we take some sort of action at our next meeting, which is a week from today. So if you have subsequent thoughts or would like additional information, please touch base with Mr. Campbell this week. And again, we will have some additional data for you to digest next Monday. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Anything else on this? No? Okay. Then we will move on to sewer, or water and sewer line insurance. And with, also in your packet was a letter that I received in my mailbox. It's actually three letters. The first of, the first one is addressed Highbrian, and it's signed by Suzanne Newhouse and Roger Ammonson. Did everyone receive a copy of this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. These two individuals are actually friends of mine. They are former neighbors directly across the street on Russell. They have since moved out of the city into York Township. And prior to their move, a number of years ago, they had invested or purchased the sewer and water line warranty that we've been offering, offering through NLC for the last five or six years now. Is that correct, Mr. Campbell? And needless to say, they had some issues. Now, the good news is that at this point, it's been resolved. And the other good news that we should all be very proud of is how much they think of our DPW director, Mr. Fordice, and how complimentary they both have been of him in writing and in speaking to me. So Jeff, thank you for, for doing all that you did for them. But I thought I'd add this as a discussion item because they have some real concerns with the service. And so I know that Jeff, you've talked to them and met with them. Do you have any comments or any ideas on, on how best we can move forward? Because the issues that they experienced, the, the delays, quite frankly, from my perspective, are unacceptable. And this, at least in theory, is a really good service and product, and if it can be delivered effectively, you know, I'll continue to endorse it and encourage our, our constituents to invest in it. But if not, then I, I think we need to, to, to make a change.
Yeah, I did, I, I worked with these folks for a while to get their, their issue resolved. And there did seem to be some, I think maybe a, a communication issue, a little bit of a customer service issue, where perhaps service line warranty folks were not, I think, speaking the same language that, that the policyholders were speaking. And that the initial contact, what was described to the best of their knowledge and ability, was received by the warranty company as a non-coverable circumstance. And then the next time the policyholders made contact with service line warranties, the property had already been sold, which, again, was a non, technically a non-coverable circumstance. It was somewhere around that point where I got involved and, I guess, convinced service line warranties that the incident had occurred while they owned it, while they were active policyholders, and that it should be covered. And then reviewing the timeline with service line warranties today, you know, it, it was really from early September. So September, October, there was a resolution, and, and then, I don't have the exact date with me, but in November, they received payment. So longer than ideal. And if you go back to when they first contacted, the first contact was in July, where there was what I'm perceiving was a, a communication difficulty between service line warranties and, and the policyholder. Again, I, I think there's maybe some fault everywhere, unintentional fault, and that. Again, I think there's maybe some fault everywhere, unintentional fault, and that maybe service line warranties needs a little more of a customer service orientation. And I'm still reviewing this with them to get a good record of their contacts with, with these policyholders.
One of the things that, that troubled me, and I'm sure that they mentioned this to you when you met, was that Ms. Newhouse placed a number of calls that on numerous occasions were simply not returned. And I have no reason to suspect that she's being disingenuous or untrue. I understand that people have disagreements and a company versus a petitioner is going to interpret a contract differently. If that happens, it's regrettable.
Right.
But from a customer service standpoint, especially if you make a phone call and you can confirm that I'm leaving a message from Jeff, for Jeff Fordice because it's Jeff Fordice's voicemail, I think you have 48 hours to return that call. And if that's not the case, then I think you need to communicate a message on that, that I'm going to be out of the state.
Right.
Or I'm going to be occupied for the next three days. I frankly think that that's unacceptable.
Yeah. And that, that record of contact is something that I started reviewing with, with them on the, on this case particularly to see, you know, what service line warranties records show. And, you know, maybe get in touch with these folks again. And, because I know she kept very precise records of the whole, the whole process. And kind of compare those two and see where there's discrepancies and if there's a customer service issue, you know, if there's just, it, there've been some other folks who have had fine experiences with this. Typically, I only get involved, obviously, when there's an issue. So the ones I'm most closely familiar with, there's been some kind of discrepancy between, you know, what the customer thought their coverage was, what the company thought the coverage was.
And that's sort of why I brought it up. I'm hoping that this is the exception rather than the rule.
Right.
But if there are things that, that we can do at our end to improve the relationship between a petitioner and the warranty company, then, then I believe we ought to do that.
Right.
Do other members of council have questions or comments? Mr. Rhodes?
I agree with what, what you just said and certainly what transpired in this process is, is not acceptable as, as we know it to be. But I'd like to know if this is just an outlier, you know, if, do 98% of the claims go through a reasonable process? In which case, there's probably relatively little action that we should take or attempt to take here, other than expressing our displeasure. But if, if this is the trend, then we need to have some more serious discussion with these folks.
You'll do a little bit more research and double back with us.
Yeah. We, we've had some initial discussions with them about trying, of getting that overall program, you know, how many, how many claims, how long till the problem was corrected, how many were denied, you know, and get that, those statistics and.
And perhaps have some discussion with residents who, whose claims were processed to see how they felt about it from their end.
Absolutely. Ms. Savo Kene.
Do you know how many of our residents are subscribed to this or what percentage of residents sign up for this?
I don't know that. That's actually one of our points of inquiry with, with this, to find out what, what the rate has been.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Har?
Yes. I would also like to, to have additional data about numbers and percentage of subscribers. And if possible, follow up with, I, I'm not sure that the company will give you the names of people who've used the service.
Yeah.
But if we had a way of talking to people who have used the service, I mean, I've, I've heard anecdotally from a couple of people that they had very good luck with it. I will say personally, also anecdotally, I am a subscriber and I've had some difficulties with communication with our customer service department, simply in clarifying why billing has worked in a way that was completely a surprise to me. And, and the, the speaking the same language issue has, has come at that, in that case too. So I'd be interested in if we have any way of, of finding out if we have other people with the same experience.
Mr. Campbell?
It's been several months, probably, maybe a year or so, but I had provided current data as far as the number of claims and how much and that type of thing. So that's, that data is available. But again, they're pretty protective of those individual, the names and such, for appropriate reasons.
But we know at least one.
Well, I haven't made a claim. This is simply about paying my premiums.
Do you think you'll have data to report back a month's time?
Yeah.
If we start tentative plan to put this as, make this a discussion item at our first meeting in March?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. We'll plan on that then. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. And congratulations on getting such a glowing act rate from this couple.
Thank you. We appreciate your assistance.
Okay. Last, but certainly not least, is the DTE LED rate change. Mr. Gearball?
This may be something that staff's aware of, but I noticed in the Ann Arbor News or whatever, MLive, there was a discussion about the changing rates and so forth for potentially the issue related to LEDs with the fact that DTE is looking at potentially changing the rate structure so that they would increase the cost associated with LEDs and reduce it with sodium vapor and mercury vapor type lamps. So Ypsilanti was one example where they invested the money to change all their lights and were looking at the payback from that perspective. But now as a result of the potential issue is that they could lose those savings as a result of the increase in fees. Similar thing, Representative Irwin just mentioned this and was discussing it. So it sounds like this is all going to be coming before, I guess, the Rate Exchange Commission. I don't know what we can do, if this is going to impact us. It sounded like it's something that the local communities are all discussing and I don't know if MML is dealing with the two, but since we were having that discussion just last week, when I mentioned, is there a difference between the LED costs and the vapors? And we're going with LEDs, it sounds like it's relevant at this point in time.
Sure. Sure. Just briefly, staff is, I actually had put an email into our DT rep because they're also looking at, at increasing residential rates as well.
Yeah, $13 a person.
So, so I wanted to get a better explanation on that. And, and again, taking your email forward. Unfortunately, was not able to make contact, so I will follow up. I'm, I'm making assumption that maybe because of the weather, they were busy doing other things, I don't know.
No, that's fine. I just saw that and was kind of like, wow, this is a serious change that, all of a sudden wouldn't have known it unless we saw it in the paper.
Right. Thus far, we've, we've seen those savings for the, for the limited amount of, of lights that we've changed over. But I know Mr. Fordice is in the process of getting information from his contact as well at DTE and as far as going forward and how, what kind of impact that may have on us.
Yeah. And actually, today I'd seen in the Crane notification that their, DTE is going forward with an RFP to try and encourage people to use even more energy efficient type infrastructure and devices and so forth. So it's kind of odd that we're encouraged to try and become more energy efficient, yet we're going to pay even more, because I know that's part of their bottom line. But this seems like it's kind of, you know, a switch and, a bait and switch, so.
I also, Mr. Gearball, I appreciate you bringing this up. I, I didn't have a chance to speak to staff and Mr. Campbell about it, but I did receive an email on this issue from Commissioner Ping. And actually, that was a forwarded email from Sabre Briere, who's a longtime council member and a friend in Ann Arbor, who's really been aggressive on this issue. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, from what I read this afternoon or this morning in the Ann Arbor News, that Ann Arbor City Council is considering this week a resolution opposing the change. So we can certainly find out more and perhaps that's the appropriate next step for, for this body as well.
Yeah. And that was kind of what I was thinking myself, too. Thank you, Mayor.
And I actually think that based on the other recipients on that email, that that's something that will at least be considered and discussed by the Ypsilanti City Council as well. So we'll follow up and we'll make sure that this item is added as a discussion item to begin next week. Okay? Mr. Rhodes?
I read an article that indicated that the amount of the increase for LED lighting is, DTE is justifying that because of the cost of the, the poles and the installation and everything and that for those municipalities that own their own poles, that it will be a much lower increase. And I believe we do own the poles that are the pedestrian lighting in our downtown area anyway. So it appears that we would have a dual rate structure.
Very good. You want to comment at all?
Sure. I was just going to reiterate that that is correct. We do own the poles downtown, but unfortunately, the, the lights that we've been changing over are, are DTE lights.
Right. I was thinking of our Michigan Avenue.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else on this? Then again, this will come back as a discussion item at our next meeting. Are there any other discussion items? Now that we move on to the second public comment period, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question of city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
First off, I would like to address the parking, but I received an email from Karen over at Cobblestone Rose, so I'm hoping to read that and not have that go into my three minutes of, of time. But I'll get, get with this email here. Since the new parking procedures went into effect, there has been several issues. Customers to my store voicing complaints. This was even more prevalent on the Winterfest weekend since people were coming downtown for extended periods of time. The parking behind the Process Results Lot is often full now, that everyone is vying for all-day parking. This past week, it was also a sheet of ice making it dangerous for some of my older employees. One of the officers explained to me that it was the city council that wanted this change and we would, we should contact them. When a different employee went to city hall to pay her ticket on Saturday, she was told it was the merchants that wanted it and complained to them. I have been in town for 23 years and attended a lot of merchants' meetings. The sentiment, at least on the south side of Michigan Ave, has always been that there isn't a problem. We do not support these limitations. I do realize that there's an issue on the north side of Michigan Ave, which should be addressed in some way, but now everyone is paying the price while the lot sits empty. The only problem is Friday nights when the enforcement does not occur anyway. We are all going to have a tough go at it for this year and next, trying to put ourselves in a position to survive the construction of US 12 in 2016, which has been moved up two years. Anything that creates ill will towards the merchants and costume business is not in the best interest of them or the Celine community. As far as I know, the merchants were not asked to vote on this proposal, so they do not deserve the blame from disgruntled citizens. So I also had a discussion with Wally and some other business owners here in town. And as a downtown business owner and an individual who's been in the city for his fair share of, of parking discussions, I'm a little concerned that the quick and hasty decisions are being made that affect all the business owners without any of the decision-making makers being directly affected positively or negatively in their business or form of income. It is the livelihood of the business owners and the employees of those business, said businesses, that will suffer immensely in the end. Passing on a couple of concerns from Wally and Karen, with several businesses increasing staffing, there's a lack of all-day parking. With more restaurants coming to town, there's a lack of convenient parking for guests at any time, day or eve. If you want people to come to Celine as a destination, we should not be making it a negative experience to visit, live, dine, shop, work, open a new business, or continue to invest in our existing businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Jack Roman, Maurice Designs. Thank you, first of all, for taking a look at my proposal so quickly. I realize this came up quickly. I would just say that, you know, my issue is kind of a spinoff from parking enforcement. All I'm asking you to do is restore what I've been doing in actuality for the last eight years. You made the comment about further south. I would just submit to you that the brewery there has the option of Henry Street that I don't have. They also have their own private parking. Karen loads in the back. The barber shop doesn't have any issues. So really, it's, I'm the one that's going to be affected the most by this, so I would really prefer you keep it up front as close as possible. The other thing I would submit to you, for those of you who are not familiar with my situation, please stop by this week. I'll be happy to show it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Any other citizen comments? Please.
Hi, folks. Thanks for taking a couple of minutes. I'm Ron Schofield. I'm with Salt Springs. And again, speaking to the parking, we have heard that there is a study going on. And a couple of things that caught my attention, I think, would interest all of us, and that would be transparency of, as the numbers are gathered, vacant spaces during times of day, tickets written, things like that, I think it would be helpful for all of us to have a hand on it because during the day on our side, behind Wally's in our building, there are open spots. And people that we have working now on our site, we ask them to park over there, we missed the sign and guys have gotten tickets now. So, you know, our people are looking for where they're going to park. Obviously, during the construction period, it's important that people that are bringing goods and services to the building can access, you know, their trucks and we're doing the best we can with a limited amount of space. But going forward, it seems a little silly to have open lots where people are not, you know, spots are not filled, yet people that are parking there are being ticketed. In the course of an afternoon or an event, people coming into town, watching a football game, maybe visiting some shops, they'll easily, we'd hope they spend more than four hours in town. We can't be ticketing these people for coming into our town. That's, it's counterproductive. So I guess I would ask that as the study, you've asked for six months to go through to see how this is working, it would be nice to be a part of it and understand what these ratios are and know that when we come into town, we plan to bring 20 to 30 employees and then we hope to fill up the building at particular times. And this will be a reoccurring discussion. So I hope council is looking at options and working towards solutions that, you know, are going to make everyone, you know, happy in the long run. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Pete Toramina. I'm at Gem Italian Grill. I don't understand the parking concern at all. There are only three kinds of people parking downtown. The customers, we certainly need them. The employees, my employees, who all work more than four hours on their shift. And the tenants. In every study we do, we want more people living downtown. Who is it we're trying to chase out? It just doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening, Jennifer Weaver with gen motion marking. First of all, I thank you all very much for your consideration and willingness to hear the concerns of the downtown business owners. Speaking on behalf of not only myself but my tenant mates who run a practice that themselves, as well as I, don't have a large number of employees ourselves. We do have and they have a number of clients that come in, more on their part than mine, that have some physical disabilities that can't park at an extended distance away or utilize some of those less frequented lots. And they can be there for an extended period of time. And they, like I, have a difficult time breaking up our day at, you know, a four-hour interval to relocate the vehicles. So my request would be, thank you in considering and looking into this issue further. And if there are some additional options for extended parking spots made available for the employees that have businesses that either require their clients or customers to be there for longer periods of time, or their employees to be there longer periods of time, that we have those, those options made available. I noticed that in the resolution that was passed, there was the option of purchasing a, kind of an extended parking permit. In my personal view, the, the rates assigned to that weren't necessarily practical. So if that is an option, maybe just revisit the rates that would be assigned for that, that kind of opportunity. So thank you again for your ongoing concern and, and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any additional citizen comments? No? Well, let me just say this, and I think I speak for the whole group, when I say we, we appreciate you taking the time to attend our council meeting and to voice your, your concerns. I'm certainly sympathetic to those. As I said, in fact, it's on our agenda to be discussed at our first meeting in June. We will, we will revisit this issue and potentially make some changes. And we hope that there's a continued dialogue and discussion on, on what could make parking in downtown better. I also want to apologize if there was any miscommunication because it was the council, it was the legislative body of the city of Celine that decided to begin enforcement January 1. And I'm certainly aware of the fact that there were people opposed to that. I'm certainly aware of the fact that there were people in I'm certainly aware of the fact that there were people in favor of that. But I think it's important to take a six-month period to study this, to evaluate it, to assess all the ebbs and flows, and then in June, have a discussion and dialogue amongst ourselves and with all community stakeholders to identify the best ways to move forward. Now, again, next week, I'm hoping to have consensus on a non-commercial loading and unloading zone on South Ann Arbor, potentially the creation of some more long-term parking spots in the southeast quadrant of downtown. And I hope that in the coming months, there's continued consensus and support on the DA's here for the acquisition for more parking downtown, because I think it's absolutely essential, especially as our economy rebounds and we have new businesses come online. I think the amount of customers and employees that we bring to our downtown, well, I think they, well, it's not think, I know they can't be accommodated with the existing parking. So, again, appreciate everyone's time this evening, and it is an issue that this council and this city takes very seriously. Is there anything else to come before Celine City Council this evening? No, then I will remind you that we have no work meeting, just a regular meeting at, next Monday, excuse me, the ninth, at 7:30. Then our following meeting is on March the 2nd with a work meeting, possibly on the streets. There's the potential that we could do the pension liability. And I also need to fit in a work meeting with the folks from the ride as well. So, it's likely that we'll have a work meeting on that date. I'm not exactly sure what the subject will be. And then a regular meeting following that at 7:30. There are no absences this evening, so we can dispense with a motion to excuse any member of this body. So at this time, I would seek a motion to adjourn at 9:02 PM.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Geerboh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Ms. Sibokanik. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.